No, nobody's contacting me.
I was like, well, how many days? The over, the number, the number of games. Unless you had, unless you had all those signed, I guess. Well, that's not us. Channels, okay. Yeah. Want to go down that room?
So is this city league there?
Oh, we got another Irma shirt. Wow. At least this is a color I can wear. The last one was bright green. This is.
Oh, yeah.
This is a little easier. A little easier to wear. Oh, boy. How are you?
You good?
Good.
Long day, but the rest of you.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm at my desk at seven AM every morning. And so this does make for a long day.
Can't keep up that morning part though. Anything I do before nine, I feel like I did it secretly when no one else was awake.
I get more done before nine than I do the rest of the day.
Yeah. Hello?
Steve, what's going on?
Trying to keep busy. Keep my head low.
Probably too hard to do that around here.
I was out to the landfill. We are recording hours. I mean, still out there, Vernon.
Huh?
I don't know if they're gonna get it out today or not. It was just, I can tell you why, I can tell you why you're excited. Why is that?
He's not talking to you.
Yeah, so it's, uh, been busy, but happened really weird stuff.
What?
Just a dump catching on fire, a vehicle fire. We had a horse trailer, I think it was full of hay. And it was the converted trailer that the, uh, offshoot people had taken and turned it into a tool chair and put sawed panels on top of it, put a whole bunch of batteries on it. Batteries shorted out. Top this, I mean, it's a, it's a thirty thousand dollar stainless steel sided horse trailer cannon and lit it on fire. Just some weird, weird stuff.
Kinda stand back and shake your head.
Pointer was over here. I've been out to the dump on that firestone all through. We had a car fire. One of those. One of those days. Cause I just had a.
Hey, Arlo, how you doing?
Hey, it's been a while. Yeah.
Well, that was sudden. Started out in town, we're back on a trip back east.
Yes, a lot of people, it happened over the weekend and there. Some print.
So if you guys still doing all the stuff? Okay, I got some, for spring 34 users, I've got, uh, some water apps that need to be approved.
Okay.
And I think you guys have all the information, but I'll bring you the notice from state.
Okay, yeah.
Brad still doing that?
Brad's still in the, his office right next to us. Uh, we've got a new engineer in the office, so he'll be.
So who's running it now? You?
There's a few.
A few?
So Dallas is the new engineer.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll just come in, I'll come in in the next couple of days with the notice.
Yeah, fine, I'll pull up your file, I'll hook it in. Yep, yep. How you doing?
Fine. How's, how's Jerry doing?
I don't talk to her a whole lot. I've seen her a couple times and it's like she sounds good, it's not.
Well, I'll get her phone number, one of our get to the office. We got to be friends on Jerry.
I know I don't have to adjust my chair tonight, cause I've already been here for an hour and a half in this chair today. Have you really? For these are services.
Yeah, just grabs.
That's my Irma shirt.
All the time. My favorite place to be. Talked to Craig about that. Said I'm here enough, I should get a salary.
What's that?
A city council salary or something. For being here so often.
Here is a, I'm not sure I'd call it a salary. There's a stripe end. How are you?
I am fine, how are you?
You praying for us?
Yes.
Checking with this guy, he's gonna be the mayor pro temp. I am.
Oh, damn.
The mayor is, uh.
Not again.
Every time you come, look what it is. Has the opportunity to be with a bunch of, uh, male mayors, female mayors from around the country. They invited Little Cedar City to come. Isn't that cool? Probably not, but I can. But I usually don't.
They're just this big.
Some of them are wondering about that. Tyler says, no, you can vote anytime, even though you're conducting. I says, yeah, I know, I just usually don't unless there's a. Tie. I just like my bird just funny. See, it's not, it's not what you know, it's who you know. And the nickel will get you something. Good to see ya. See, mister, mister, let's see, what is it? Oh, that gets. That's cause you, that's cause, that's cause you, that's cause you tease me about the cult. This guy, this guy, he quotes me, our scriptures often are. He's, he's on top of it. Let's see. I still remember your name, I think.
We got, we got a little bit on our plate tonight.
Yes. I was gonna say, I haven't, I haven't sent you a gun in a while.
I know, I know, what's the deal?
Roy, are you doing?
My gun guy.
Oh, I know where you're from, I know. Jerry, he's a character. We always tease each other. When we're on an notary. When, when, if they asked me to pray, he'd say, you need me to write a prayer for you.
Yeah, yeah, you need a little help. Nina Barnes told me one time, I had notary, she said, I really like your prayer, we should come to city council and go read a little Mormon prayer. I said, well, Nina, I can do it. Then when she was on council, I can't pray one.
Oh, you're all right. Nice seeing you. We used to do once in a while. But I do miss seeing you.
Likewise. I think you guys frequently, you and Craig and Craig I have connections with, that, uh, Cedar Van Foreman.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
You know that we are now doing probably eighty million a year.
Wow.
We have a, uh, we have a mortgage payment statement. That we do, uh, assistance on second and first. So.
Wow.
Just to give you an idea of the business, we sold off at a discount, uh, they were zero note pay per. We sold off twelve million last month.
Nice, that's good. Wow, that's great, that's great. So, so I shouldn't hold my breath for the truck stop, huh?
No, that's right. Well, the truck stop is off. I mean, that's.
When I saw that new, uh,
Car wash. Yeah, we're just getting.
The one that they're doing on Main Street there? I thought about our trip up to Salt Lake, like touring those car washes.
Yeah. No, that's somebody else's. I don't know who.
No, I know, I know. But it just reminded me of that.
And, uh, we got a grant from HUD and, uh, so we're gonna do it. We'll just open up the proposals for the designers next week.
Cool. So are you still doing something with the tribe?
There's gonna be like a new Tyler.
I've ordered for you.
Agenda.
I didn't give you a hug, so you was wavering.
That was, that was a concher.
You, you worked at Metalcraft?
That's the stick we go by, they'll show to me.
I guess.
How does Diane Feinstein live in there?
She needs to be in prison.
Yeah, I agree. Center budget Frisco, so she can go on a poop patrol.
You're like, okay.
A short while later. Well, and, and, yeah. Trying to make it so. Relevant. Just telling socialists, I mean.
Well, I hope. That's Venezuela, how that's working out for them. They're eating their dogs and cats to stay alive.
I wore mine once.
Careful, 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 careful. Yeah, I don't want you, I don't want to pop you. Yeah, one of them's like, grab an arm. So you need a little one. I need to put snacks on it, you can bring them up every once in a while. That's for the long meeting.
His constituents are here.
Expecting that, I mean. He's gonna pledge.
So, is this someone that he wants to move off the concern?
Presents, presents. Yeah, you might even help me make a little donation, right? Oh, well, that's okay. Got up for about five minutes. We went just a few minutes over, but. And how many were there? Thirty, forty-five. Kit was there as a hall and the mayor and some bicycle. How did Jeremy do? Need to compare one. Water table's high up. We have to dig a lot.
They might.
We've, we've thought about doing some, uh, Mason water balancing where you take water cup and add it to the. There's a well out, like for instance, there's a well out. That's what's interesting.
I have a green pen. That's all I carry. Be confused as to who, who is where.
That's a lot of water.
I don't know if this eight hundred.
Change to the.
Right.
It kinda took air out of me. I was, I was. I agree.
Uh, I must skip right over that one.
People stare at me, period. Another row of houses in there or something?
So it's about five thirty, we should probably get started. The first thing we would have to do is, uh, welcome everybody and appoint a mayor pro temp. And I, uh, move that we make, uh, Councilman Adams our mayor pro temp.
I'll second that.
For both meetings. We have a home. We have a.
All in favor?
You own it, Ron.
You do such a great job.
Thank you, I think. Looking at the agenda, I'm not sure. Anyway, we would like to welcome you all here this evening to our city council meeting for September the nineteenth. And we'd like to excuse our mayor this evening. She is, won't be with us and is off doing some good things. And we're excited for her, so. Anyway, um, we will begin with, uh, a prayer from Jerry Van I Warden with the Westview Christian Center. And then, uh, Councilman Paul Cousins will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Is that the proper thing to say? Probably. Let's pray, shall we? Father, we are gathered here together with a true attitude of gratitude for the blessings you have showered upon our community. We are experiencing great optimism among our citizenship and prosperity for our businesses and individuals and are turning to you for the wisdom that we need to steward these great blessings. I'm specifically asking that you would provide the wisdom and understanding that our mayor, council, and city administrators need to be able to rule and to protect our city. We're also asking that you would protect our first responders, our police, our fire, our EMTs, and all of those who are engaged in social services. We also join in asking for your protection upon our citizens in general, but especially those that are serving in our armed forces. We are also praying for the moisture that we so desperately need for our area. And we're saying all of these things and thanking you in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Amen. Thank you, Jerry.
Please rise and follow me in pledging allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda order for both meetings.
I would like to make a motion on the, uh, the action meeting that we move consent item number four down to the action agenda.
Okay.
And with that, I would make a motion to approve it with that one change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, we'll move into the administration agenda. Uh, mayor and council business first. Um, council, have any, anything you want to bring up?
Of course I do. I, um, am wondering, um, and Mayor Pro Tem and Mr. City Manager, I guess, in the, in the absence of the mayor. Can we, uh, respond to a couple of things? Over on one hundred West and Harding Avenue? The weeds are terrible there on that lot on the corner of one hundred West and Harding. I'm not sure if that particular area belongs to the Episcopal Church. I'm, I'm not sure who it belongs to. Across from the Eden Apartments, but you can, you can't even get down the sidewalk. And the second one is in the same vein. Do you know what I'm talking about there? Across from Eden Apartments. The, the second one is, I'm wondering if we could, um, send some kind of a notification to the owner of the top spot. Uh, the former top spot. Um, there's large weeds and elm trees. There's large weeds and elm trees and everything growing there and I'm not sure if you're trying to sell the business, that's the best impression you want to give and and it's right on our main street and I, I think we need to see about having him come in and have some, cleaned up a little bit. So those are my two concerns.
Can I add to that? So, right there on Coal Creek where we did the Woodbury Split, that diamond block along there, is there a way we can sterilize that soil or something so it doesn't? I mean, it is really bad.
Yeah, we did it a couple of years ago, I think, but there's a trail that goes right along there, so.
It's just, it's getting pretty bad.
I'll check for Parks and Rec, what they did there a couple of years ago. Try to do the same thing.
Thank you. That's all.
I have one request. I have another meeting at seven. If we are not adjourned by then in the second in the work meeting, could I please be excused?
Sure.
Thanks.
Do you have a note from home?
Do I vote for you? I'm just kidding. It's a work meeting.
Depends on how long it is, we might send you for pizza. All right, any comments from staff? Brian?
Hi, Brian Dangerfield, Director of Events. I'm wearing the Cedar City Half Marathon shirt, but before I, I'm going to invite our half marathon volunteers to come up really quickly. While they're doing that, I want to let you know that on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we had an Otrude Invitational. We had about thirty-six cyclists from Brazil, from Costa Rica, from Canada. And they had a great time. There was a lot of wind, but it was just beautiful scenery and they're very impressed and we're excited about our 2019 event. If you could kind of line up right here.
Were these, Brian, were these officials from Otrude or just cyclists?
These were cyclists that had signed up for the original event and then some that, that were invited and our, our Costa Rican, you'll, you'll see the post on Facebook on Velo Cedar City and, and they're just so excited to be here and to see the Red Rock and it was great to see that, but we had, we had a great Cedar City Half Marathon. I think we deserved the good weather after the the rain that we had previous year. We had great support from, from SEU and the track team and here we go really fast. I know this is going to be a really busy council meeting, but I'd like each one of these volunteers to introduce themselves and, and see who they represented and what they did during the half marathon, but it takes a whole community. It's just not one person that puts on these events. It takes a lot of cooperation and so I just wanted to have, we'll go ahead and just kind of go down the line and, and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Devon Montgomery. I'm a super senior at SEU. I'm on the track team. I'm a hurdler. And that's who I was representing me and Justin, we helped with setup and takedown of pretty much everything at the half marathon.
Super senior?
Yes.
That's what I assumed. I was just checking.
Hello, I'm Justin Lewis, the one he just talked about. Track team as well. I'm a sprinter. I'm also a super senior and we helped with a takedown and setup.
My name is Ronald Shelley. This is my wife Darlene. We're with the Rainbow Canyons Amateur Radio Club and we provided communication support for the, for the event.
Hi, I'm Cindy Davidson. That's my other half. I'm the one that prepares all the food at the very end. So we have a french fry tray that we cut up and put a half of orange on and a half of a banana and a Great Harvest Trex bar. And we did five hundred and fifty of those little french fry trays. So go the night before and get the fruit and then there's a wonderful group this year of sorority girls that help do a lot of the cutting and also oversee the tent that has the popsicles and where's the one fella that was just right here with the youth group that helps with all of the volunteering also. So thank you.
Hey, I'm Ashley Wardle and I'm from SEU. I was the SEU intern from the Levitt Center there. And I was the race director for the Cedar City Half Marathon and yeah, what a great opportunity for me to be a part of the city and, and volunteer and I loved it. It was a great experience, great turnout, and really great time.
Ben Davidson, I was in charge of the finish line and the track team did a great job in helping set up all the pad rail. Controlled the crowd and set up the finish line stand and put up the netting, all that good stuff. Without their help, it would have been a much longer night and day. And during the race, I got to high five all of the runners when they finished.
Christopher Forman, Cedar City Chamber of Commerce. We did a hopscotch on ours. You'd be amazed the number of runners that did hopscotch. It was pretty cool. So fun, fun experience.
Brad Abrams, Race Registration and Marketing. I'm not really a volunteer, but I enjoyed working with Brian and doing it, so.
Okay, we know we have a busy meeting, but I, I just wanted to say we did a couple of things and I, I want to say thank you to Ashley. We've had some great interns from SEU and Ashley did a great job. Thank you so much and we did some extra things. We had some bagpipers that were up the canyon, the narrowest part of Cedar Canyon playing as the runners came by and I just get goosebumps thinking about that and just about every runner that went by made a comment about it. By the time they got to Little League fields, they had one more mile to go and we had a rock band playing some energetic music for them, so. I, I wanted to thank all the volunteers. There was a lot that couldn't make it tonight and we'll put all their names on the, on our Facebook page, but I want to thank the community and for, for coming and supporting this event and, and look forward. We'll always focus on quality on this event. Is there any questions or?
Brian, how, how do the numbers this year compared to last year, previous years?
We raised the price. Again, we, we tried to focus on quality. We had about seven hundred sign up. And there's always those that have injuries and those that have last, last thoughts about running a half marathon, so. We were, we were down about a hundred and eighty, I think. Brad was about a hundred and eighty from last year, but our revenues were, were about the same. For that, so. And, and, and just as well, we, we have to get school buses and we have to get the runners up the canyon. We can only get so many up. We'll never be a race that has over nine hundred runners in it. So it'll be more of a quality thing. We're going to go upstairs right now and, and we're going to talk about, kind of debrief and talk about what we're going to do for our tenth anniversary next year and and see what we can do better. So, thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Thanks, so all of you.
Thanks to all of you, yeah. Okay, is there any other staff? Like to comment on anything before we move on? Okay. I'm gonna move into the business agenda then with our public comment section. If there is something you would like to address the council on that is not an agenda item, it's an agenda item, if you'd wait till then, we'll allow you to speak then. But if you have something else, you're welcome to come forward, state your name and be as brief as possible.
Matt Carey, I didn't come to say this, but since I'm here, I will, since you brought it up, Paul. I got a famous letter saying that I needed to clean weeds off of my property this year and, or else I'd be subject to fines and whatnot, but then that allows you to see more clearly everywhere else there's weeds. So Coal Creek was a perfect example that really ticked me off because we paid for that with taxpayer dollars and you can't even see the wall because the weeds are four or five feet high in some places, so. If I gotta pay to clean up my personal property and I get a letter from the police department saying I'm subject to fine if I don't by a certain date, then I would appreciate the city to have the same kind of attitude towards their own property. So, since you brought it up, that's what, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, is there anything else from anybody? Okay. If not, we'll move into the public agenda, beginning with the consent agenda. The approval of minutes dated August fifteenth and twenty-second, twenty eighteen. Ratify the bills dated August thirty-first, twenty eighteen, and approve bills dated September fourteenth. Approve amending the subdivision plat for Lot Five, Block A, and the Forest Park subdivision. As we mentioned, item four is being moved down to action. Item five is to approve a road dedication on Kitty Hawk Drive and Bulldog Road. Then approve entering a contract with J-Aviation Engineers for the runway rehab design and construction management, AIP thirty-four at the regional airport. And approve a bid from American Frontier Roofing in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars for the Festival Hall Roofing Project. Move to approve the consent item, agenda items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving into the action agenda, we'll begin with the item to approve a road dedication at eight hundred West from six fifty North to seven hundred North.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, I asked to have that moved because I recognize the efforts that the city has put forward and the money that we have spent already on a couple of areas leading into this road dedication. But I still have to express my concerns that I think we're being short sighted and not thinking through this road as a wider road, so. I asked to have it brought here because I wanted to make sure that my vote didn't reflect on all the consent items and I still have concerns about the width of that road.
Okay. Any other comments? Anybody?
I can appreciate that, Scott, because I have the same concerns other than at the expense of a quarter of a million dollars. It's pretty tough to justify to take that back out, so.
That road's going to be there for eighty years, ninety years, hundred, I don't know how long that road's going to be there, long after I'm gone, but truly, I understand that and I know how stretched our tax dollars are and I'm not advocating that we waste it. I just want to make sure that we're forward thinking where the city's going to grow and how we're going to move traffic in our traffic corridors and that still remains a concern of mine, so. That's all I need to say there.
I have the same concerns and I, and I'll reiterate what I said before, is I hope that even a little something's master planned that we call timeout and maybe review some of these things when we, before we do them, because we're so far down that road. I some of those things, we just don't notice they're happening until it's too late.
I'll make a motion to approve the road dedication as presented.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. All right. We'll move into item number eight. Request to extend the hours for an outdoor dance. Do we have James Moore, a representative here for Empire Events?
The event they wanted to do on the parking garage that conflicted with the Sons of the Utah Pioneers.
Right.
So as a staff, we've tried to tell them to look for other venues if they had to have that weekend or to come back later and we'll work with them on renting the top of the parking garage. Now, on a staff level, we're not going to extend the hours. We're going to go by what we have in the ordinance, but I don't think they've come back, have they?
Did you say them at all? Okay.
I think they're looking for an alternate date.
And I don't think we ought to do anything contrary to that ordinance as stated, so. I would move to deny that request to extend the time for that dance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay. All right, item number nine. Consider an ordinance amending the subdivision plat for Cedar Bend Town Homes PUD Phase One. Bob's here for that.
Bob Platt, Councilman Adams? Yeah, Spencer's not here and he asked me to be here and I think this was discussed in the work meeting and I think everything's in order. Tyler, tell me if I'm wrong.
If I recall correctly, the only thing that the council just wanted an update on was if we were going to be able to push that fence all the way back to block wall at the back. That's the only thing I remember really being of much concern.
And what was Spencer's response? Because I wasn't here, frankly.
He was just going to look into it. He was waiting on hearing back from the manufacturer if they were going to be able to produce that.
I wasn't at the meeting, so.
I was. That's exactly what we, that's exactly where we left it, because he was going to look into it because the neighbors had concerns about privacy and animals getting through and he had some possible solutions, but he was going to check with the folks to see if that was possible and we, I guess we haven't heard back.
I think, I think some fences better than nothing, but I hope that they were able to resolve that to go all the way to it. So I'd make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Okay, we need a roll call vote on this. Councilman Harley?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. All right, thanks, Bob. Item number ten is to consider vacating the existing Cross Hollow Trail easement along Cross Hollow Road.
Good evening. Tim Watson with Watson Engineering. Any, are there any questions that have arisen, have come up since our meeting two weeks ago regarding the vacation of an easement in order to obtain a new easement?
Any more discussion on the ingress, egress, crossings with the livestock?
Not at this point, no.
Okay. I'd move to approve.
I have, I have one question. I just want to make sure that I see that Mr. Roberts is back there. I, I assume this is all okay with the old, so the Old Sorrow Ranch Estates and their plans and because I know they butt right up against his property and I'm just wondering if that all is planned.
So the area of the current easement is the commercial zone.
Right.
And so the, the zoning for the residential, the Old Sorrow Ranch area will butt up against the west side of that commercial, so the vacation of this easement that we're requesting for now is, is in agreement with our master plan for the area. The next item on the agenda is the dedication of the new easement along Cross Hollow Road and the new pedestrian trail that runs along the open spacer unused area within the Old Sorrow Ranch.
Great. I would second Councilman Cousins' motion.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, item number eleven is consider dedicating a new pedestrian and livestock trails easement along Cross Hollow.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Okay, item number twelve is to consider a final plat approval for the Cedar Bend PUD Phase Two subdivision.
I think everything's in order here.
There's only one thing we were waiting for and that was just to get the bond from the bank. I received that, so on my side, we're good to move forward.
Okay.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That's Bob.
Item number thirteen is to consider an ordinance amending Chapter Twenty-Six, Article Seven, dealing with mobile homes. Kit?
That was just some minor modifications to the RV travel trailer ordinance to try to get it a little bit more in conformance with what subdivision ordinance requires as far as approvals and, and things like that, but yeah. No real major changes in that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, starting with Councilman Cousins.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Okay, item number fourteen is consider amending the city's street master plan to add industrial road.
Okay. This item, let me just get.
Fourteen?
Yeah. Item fourteen, yeah.
You got, you've got industrial road down. Sure, I've got the right road. Yeah, down here in this location. And we're just proposing that we put that road on our master plan, so it qualifies for the impact fees as we develop that road. We're looking at possibly beautifying that area a little bit with a trail and, and some landscaping and things like that.
How about we beautify it a lot? I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, item number fifteen is to consider bids for the animal adoption center. Chief Adams?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council and staff. Chief Adams with the Police Department. So I'm going to ask Spencer if he'll just come up real quick and, and just give the council reminder on that low bid with the different value engineering that's taking place and then again, submit that for your consideration. If you have questions, I know that Tyler- Tyler put out some information on appraisals, and, and so he or Paul or I could answer questions on that as well, Spencer.
Okay, the number again with, it hasn't changed since we met last with all of the alternates included was one million four hundred fifty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-one forty-five cents.
We're going to hold you to that forty-five cents.
Right.
Any questions for Spencer?
No, I, I mean, for me, I think that we've been around the block on this numerous times and had lots of studies done, and Spencer's been very patient to work with us, and I know there's a lot of concerns out there which we expressed at the last meeting, but I just think that we, we need to move forward on this, and I, and again, I know that I'm kind of on the fundraising committee, although I'm not the chair, I want to remind everyone, I'm not sure who the chair is, but I seem to default to it. This, this is very necessary, I think, for our community, and while it is a big sum of money, and I know it's more than we originally planned, I would make a motion to approve the low bid as it's outlined.
So, to keep things clean with the bids that we have and with the money we have from CIB, can I ask the council to please award the bid at the low bid price? That will give us documentation we can give to CIB, and then we can do deductive change orders to get that value engineered price down lower, and then we can give that documentation to CIB as well for dollar amount, it'll keep it a lot cleaner than, than having a dollar amount that was mentioned in a city council meeting, it will give us a record of, here's the bid, here's all the construction documents and the bid, and then here's the change orders that reduce that price further, and that'll be a lot cleaner with.
I think the mind and will of this council is that we go forward, but that we lock in a bond at one point two million and we we fill the rest, but is that what you're telling us that will happen?
That would be the cleanest way to do it with CIB, that would be the cleanest way for Cedar City to communicate with CIB to say here's the award, here's the deductions, here's the loan amount, and here's what we're going to make up with our capital reserve funds.
Okay.
Which, by the way, the interest rate on capital reserve and our public treasurer's fund is almost the same. They're both at two point five, the treasurer's fund is two point five eight.
So are you saying in the motion, you don't want us to include that we want to cap that CIB loan at one point two, are we, are we okay with that?
Frankly, from the discussions I've heard from the council, I intended administratively to, to make up the shortfall with our capital reserve funds, I did not intend to go back to CIB and ask for.
Right, and, and I wasn't, I was just instructed, as I thought I, when we talked earlier, some of us about this, is that I was to make a motion, at least I wanted to make the motion to accept the low bid for this, for this project, and then the, the gap would be figured out wherever it comes from, and the change orders and things like that, and that was my motion, so I'm sorry if that was not clear.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion.
Mayor, may I make one quick comment?
You have.
I said I wasn't going to, excuse me, Tom Jet, I wasn't going to get myself involved in this dogfight, but.
Was that a pun?
It was pretty good.
Poor attempt.
A poor attempt, but I try. This is just, you know, I agree that we need to to clean up and, and, you know, to show respect and, and clean up that area, I, no one can, well, I shouldn't say no one, but most logical thinking people can't disagree. But there's one thing I just hope that we did add into this, and we've missed it on some of the other city projects sometimes, to make sure we've added the city impact fees into our but, or into our bid for this, because on some of the other city projects, we failed to add the city impact fees, and I think there were some legislative rulings a few years ago that said the city also has to pay the impact fees on its own project, so that's just something that just to keep, keep that in mind when we're doing our budgeting on, on this particular project, so we don't get in a bind later on. Thank you.
I'd like to make one comment, too, just I oppose borrowing three hundred thousand dollars out of our capital fund, that's ten percent of what we have in there, I approximately, I think what Jason told me, and I think we should wait and rebid this project when prices are lower, that's my, my opinion.
And another comment that was made, and I wasn't at the meeting two weeks ago, but we wanted to be very, very sure that we had O and M provided for, for this new facility. I'm not sure it's a direct trade off with the, the building that we're in now, but.
The architect did give us an estimate on operation and maintenance costs, they were slightly higher than our existing costs, I want to say maybe five to seven thousand dollars a year higher than our existing costs, that's his estimate.
Okay, okay, that's not startling, that's good.
Okay.
Okay. So do we have a second to that motion? I'll second that.
Well, do we need to further clarify that on the CIB loan in the motion, though?
I thought he did.
I thought I did when I I said that we accept the low bid as presented to the city.
But we wanted to specify that the one point two CIB.
One point two million.
So the bond, the loan amount right now from CIB is one point two six five, the six five is the closing costs and other fees that are associated with it, so please don't make your motion just at one, two.
Okay.
Please include those closing costs.
Right.
With the risk being covered.
That we, that we, I make a motion that we accept the low bid using one point two six five from the bond as outlined, and the remaining gap, whatever it terms, and the construction costs and change orders come from the cash reserve fund of the city. Is that clear?
Okay.
And and fundraising efforts.
And fundraising efforts.
I second that motion.
All right. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nay.
Opposed, one opposed. Move to adjourn this action meeting and move into our work meeting. Have a second?
Second.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yeah.
Kit reminded me that we neglected to introduce our new planner during the staff comments, and I'm very sorry we did that. Would you give, allow us to do that?
Yeah.
Would we switch meetings, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Are you going to do it, Kit? Who's doing it? Okay, Joe, you want to come up?
You ready?
This is a okay, this is a Joe Boudreau. Or Don, sorry, Donald Boudreau, sorry, I apologize.
Maybe it's your middle name, I don't know.
It's been a long day, but anyhow. Don's lived in Cedar City for several months, his folks have lived here for several years, and he's, comes from California, he was in the planning department in, in California and has a lot of good experience, and we're excited to have him and, and getting busy on helping us out with modifying some of those zoning ordinances and general plans and a lot of keeping track of all the development projects that we got coming through, so. Joe, if you want to tell them a little bit about yourself?
Ah, sure, well, thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council, city staff. Yeah, I am a long-term planner, almost eighteen years Southern California, I know I'm another transplant, but I've been driving that I-15 corridor since I was out of high school when my dad moved here, so been a longtime visitor, and we really fell, well, my wife and I, we fell in love with the place, so we bought a house five years ago, and we finally decided to pull the ripcord on Southern California, and here we are, and I'm happy to be here. I'm happy for the opportunity, and, and I hope I can help Cedar grow in a positive way.
Welcome.
Welcome, we're glad to have you.
Brothers that are refugees from California.
I like that.
Just don't, just don't take us down that path. That would be my humble request.
Don't worry, that's why I left.
Congratulations, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much.
Donald, come up, Donald, come up here and shake all our hands, will you?
Not too scared, yes, or maybe he is.
Yeah, maybe.
I saw his desk today.
We're called ordering cooking already, okay. All right, this is a work meeting September nineteenth. On the business agenda, the first item under public is a public hearing to consider amending the subdivision plat for Lot Eight in Phase Two of the Lone Tree subdivision. Back to you, Bob, or? Oh, okay.
Bob waved me on a yes, Jesse Carter, I'm the owner of that lot, and just want to make it a twin home lot instead of a duplex lot, basically private ownership on each side, this lot here. It's currently zoned R-two in that area already.
Okay, okay. So the density doesn't change at all, I mean, really?
No.
No questions.
Okay, no. All right, seeing this is a public hearing, we'll open the public hearing, if anybody would like to address this, they may come forward and state their name, and okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Jesse. We will move on to item number two. Public hearing to consider a general land use amendment from medium density residential to low density residential for property located at twenty-four hundred North Lund Highway. Arnold?
Good evening, City Council. This is Arlo Fosson with Go Civil Engineering, you heard that right, we are going less dense.
I, I couldn't believe that when I saw.
You thought it was a misprint?
So we, we do have a portion still that will be staying as the medium dense residential, and then the rest will be a residential estates. So instead of the R-two. What's that?
Where's Lund Highway? On the map?
There.
Thank you, okay.
And so there's a corner that was a low density, and then there's medium density in there, we're going to leave a, a corner of it that will stay as that medium density.
Arlo, I noticed in the planning commission, there were some questions, or some neighbors or citizens had questions about water. Is that, is that an issue out there?
Well, they've, they've got enough water rights for the development, there's, right now, there's several irrigation ditches that will be going, that are in there right now, but obviously that's going to be
Sure.
going away when the subdivision goes in.
Okay.
But right now, they're in place, they're functioning.
What, what is the plan, are these are, going to be R-one, or are these residential?
Residential estates is what they're looking at right now, so a little bit bigger lot.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, if not, this is a public hearing also, we'll open the public hearing for any public comment. If you'd like to address it, come forward now.
Evening, council staff, Jeremy Vagardson representing the airport. Just heard the word estates, and it's really close to the runway right here. So they will be susceptible to noise. You know, how the community is, they like to build right next to the airport, and their home's been there for two years, they'll call the airport and complain that it's noisy, so I would recommend we put some type of notice in the deed that they do live close to an airport, and it's going to be noisy and pollution at times.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Good suggestion. Okay. All right, any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll move on to item number three. Which is another public hearing to consider a zone change from master plan development to residential estates. Same property.
Same piece of property.
Right, so it's Arlo Fosson with Go Civil Engineering, we're changing the zone now, we went through the master plan amendment, and now we're just changing the zone to be in, in accordance with that.
Okay, any further questions, comments? Okay, we'll open the public hearing for public comments, if there is any.
So on the, on the noise issue at the airport, when they come in to subdivide that land, we can make sure there's a note on the plat. We don't get involved in the deeds when the property transfers from private party to private party, but the public process would be to put something on the plat to, when it gets recorded, to have an opportunity for people to know. And they can drive by and know that it's a noisy airport, too.
But it's not actually in the airport approach zone?
No, and, and we, on all our plats, we tell them which zone they're in as far as the airport goes.
Okay.
Is that for the developer, or is it for the, or is it for the, the property owners?
Well, it's intended to be for the
Property owners.
For the property owners, so they have an idea when they buy the property.
I just want to make sure it's passed on to them and not just the developers, since it's a master plan development that.
Yeah, when it gets recorded, the, the idea is that the property owners have the opportunity to know that there's an airport right there.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Whether everybody looks or not, I don't, I don't know.
Gotcha.
Okay, any other comments? If not, we'll close the public hearing now. And we'll move on to item number four. There's a public hearing to consider a zone change from general commercial mixed use for a property located at two seventy-one North, one hundred West. Bob?
Yeah, Bob Platt, about a year ago, we changed, this is Terry Porter's property at, basically across the street to the west from the post office. Last year, we changed this to mixed use and this to mixed use, but he did not own that right there, and he has purchased that, so now we're just asking to also change this to mixed use, and this is all in conformance with the general plan, and so that's his own change request.
Is that a lot, Bob, is it?
It's a house there, yeah.
Yeah.
There's a green, small greenhouse, yeah. And there's actually, there's a little cottage in the back.
Yeah, they've been fixing those up, it looks pretty nice along there.
What's that?
They've been fixing those up, it looks pretty nice along there.
Yeah.
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 Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll open a public hearing, if anybody would like to come comment on this. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to item number five. Which is a public hearing to consider a zone change from R-three dash M to SHD for a property located at two hundred North, four hundred West.
Yeah, Bob Platt again, tired of me, I'm sure. So, this is at the corner of two hundred North and four hundred West, the southwest, these three properties are being, requesting the zone change, this is, the zone change request is to student housing district in conformance with the general plan. That's the request. These three properties right here. This is, there's a home here, an older home here, older home here, vacant property presently right there.
Okay. Any comments, council, questions?
Same comments I had six months ago.
I'm never reconvinced of this.
No, you won't, so.
All right, seeing this is a public hearing also, we'll open the public hearing for public comment. If anybody would like to comment on this, welcome to come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll move on to item number six. Public hearing to consider a general land use amendment from low density residential to mixed use for a property located at sixteen hundred North Lund Highway.
Good evening again, Tim Watson with Watson Engineering, this came from planning commission a couple of weeks ago with an unfavorable recommendation. We are requesting the general land use change from low density residential to mixed use. To give you an idea where we're located, this is Lund Highway sixteen hundred North, sixteen hundred North transitions into Equestria Point. On the east side of Lund Highway, we have the edge of the airport and the airport fire station as well. This Lund Highway is a master planned hundred foot right away, and sixteen hundred North is a master plan. And 1600 North is a master planned 75 foot right away. So at this point, there is, there is no intersection in town that is managed by Cedar City that it will be this size. The closest thing we have are the UDOT intersections along, you know, Highway 56 and and Main Street, something like that. So my client owns two parcels of land. One here at the top and a larger one here at the bottom, approximately 10 acres. That front both Lund Highway and 1600 North. They are requesting the general land use amendment to mixed use from the low density residential. Across the street, there's a couple of developments that are in place. We have one small piece of general commercial and one medium density area that is developed. This area over west and north of my client's property is master planned low density residential as well. And so there are some estate lots in this area. If we were to travel south from 1600 North towards Highway 56, we have light commercial and industrial master plan, small, small business, light commercial, because we do have some gravel pits and other industrial uses currently there with quite a few storage sheds once you get closer to Highway 56. So our request today is to allow a, the amendment to the general land use, which will allow this property to transition into the mixed use. Mixed use, again, just as a recap, allows commercial as well as R1, R2, and R3 properties in there. It gives our client a little bit of flexibility as they choose to develop what the market will allow in that area, but at the same time, with the, the intersection location, that could be a, a great area for some type of buffer between the heavy traffic and the lower density residential off of Lund Highway.
What is it currently zoned? Oh, both pieces of property zoned.
Okay, so the item that we're discussing right now is just the general land use amendment, but the the current zoning is INM1, so industrial manufacturing one, light commercial, light industrial, and then we also have R1 here in the back.
Okay, so.
It's split north-south, even though our property runs is split in two parcels east-west.
I just think that's important to know.
Yeah, how long has that been the general land use designation, the zoning there? Do we have any idea that I, I am, has been there for a long time on that north-south portion? Or is that recently in the update?
The current zoning has been that way for about 10 years. The general land use, though, if I remember correctly, it was 2012 is the last one that I've seen. As far as an update, I don't know what it was prior to that.
Okay. And I'm not sure this area was the land use was changed in 2012.
So it may have been that way for a very long time. Yeah, it just seems odd that we're requesting property for east-west, and yet it's zoned north-south, and it's just very odd to try and wrap your head around it. And
If we can, because it is one parcel, let's just talk about one parcel then, if it makes it easier.
Well, I, I think I can handle it.
Okay.
I can do two things at once. Yeah. I, I guess I guess the concern is, I mean, I certainly wouldn't want to live out there and then have storage sheds right across from my single-family dwelling if that, if that were to be the case, not that it is, but it certainly could be that way, the way it's currently zoned.
With the INM, there are many other uses that
Right.
Could be put in there. Yes, that is correct.
Do we have, do we have any restrictions or problems? I mean, if they, if it becomes R1 or R2, how does, how does traffic get out onto that road? On the Lund Highway, I mean, is do they have to go to 1600? Or how do they do that?
Well, it pretty much depends on how it develops.
Right.
We've got certain restrictions on our road intersections, on how close our road intersections can be. And also our driveways can be how close they can be to an intersection. So most of that will be addressed as development happens and they have to conform to the requirements in the zoning ordinance.
But generally, R1, going north from this property, R1, they couldn't back out onto that huge street.
No, there's no backing.
There's no, that would not be allowed.
So anything over 55 feet is not allowed to back directly out onto the, the streets? So we don't have that option on either side of this property, so there would have to be some type of an entrance coming into the property if we did that.
Like this property right here then is R1?
Mm-hmm.
For residential estate, which are?
It's currently zoned R1.
That's what I thought. Either these people that own this property that kind of thought they were going to have a buffer and now if that becomes mixed use.
So two of these property owners, if I recall, these two properties are owned by the same individual, and this property owner also opposed the, the general land use and the zone change through planning commission. They were, both of them are on wells. They're worried about commercial polluting the, the water for their wells is, is what they indicated. One of the gentlemen indicated that he didn't want anything above a certain height because it would obscure his view of the mountains. But again, they, so, and then there was one other individual that lived over in, I want to say it was Sycamore Trails that opposed this, and she indicated that she felt that the whole area needed to be residential. Again, because of the airport approach zone, because of the crosswind runway, there's an area down here in Equestrian Point that cannot have residential homes in it because of the, the approach zone. And we are just outside of that. And that area along Lund Highway, basically from 1600 North all the way down to Highway 56 is proposed to be the this small business or industrial, light industrial manufacturing for the general land use. So we already have things in the area, if you will, other land uses that do not comply, not comply, that are, that are not residential, even though these property owners in the area do want it all to be residential. I don't know if you have the airport approach zone layer that you can put on there to, to show the end of the runway in this approach zone comes. I'll wait until it's finished generating.
So Tim, the chances of having a high structure built with an R1 is just as great as a commercial, if not more?
It could, if I remember correctly, and maybe Jeremy can clarify if I need to, but my understanding, because of the airport approach zone, there are horizontal and vertical restrictions of building heights as the closer we get to the runway because of their their radars and their communication frequencies. And so I haven't looked into it to a certain extent, but there may be some height restrictions on this property, as well as some of the others coming into this, this crosswind runway. But again, as you can see here in the Equestrian Point area, there are very few, I, I don't want to say, I can't say 100% that there are no structures in this airport approach zone, but there are definitely building restrictions in that area. And again, we are a short distance away. The property we are requesting the general land use and zone change for sits just to that northwest corner. But again, we, we do have the light industrial or small business corridor to this master plan down in this area. Any other questions?
Pretty good with it? For questions?
So if I can point out one other item that was brought up during planning commission. The planning commission wanted to preserve some of the residential area, but they also said that they did not want a spot zone. And that makes sense. I understand that to a certain extent. As busy as this potential intersection could be, it makes sense to have some other type of buffer. We do have a spot zone that sits there now that is a high-density residential. It is R3M that sits currently there just across the street from the R1 and surrounded by medium density. So again, what we are requesting gives us the flexibility to look at the options for this corner. Can't guarantee that it will be commercial, and I can't guarantee that it will be something.
No, once it's rezoned and sold, you can't guarantee any of that stuff.
Right. Property is already a spot zone.
You're exactly right. You're exactly right. So there is some spot zoning already in, in place.
I guess in general, I'm not real favorable of rezoning it based on like positioning the property to sell or whatever, if your owner was coming in with a project that fit in the neighborhood and whatnot. I guess I would probably be more in favor of it rather than just wondering what might be put in there. I, I agree that mixed use is probably better than INM, but not generally in favor of just changing it just because. So that's just my thoughts.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing on this item. If there's anybody who would like to come forward and address it, they're welcome to. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll go to item number seven. Public hearing to consider a zone change from INM and R1 to mixed use for the same piece of property. All right, Tim? Your story hasn't changed, Tim.
No, it has not. Tim Watson with Watson Engineering. It's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Okay, I understand.
I want to put the convenience store on that corner of 1600 North. That's what I want to do.
Then you go buy it.
I know. There's the rub, as they say.
Well, you, you may have to come back and get a zone change on it if it wouldn't fit right now.
That's right.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing on this item.
Thank you for your time.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Anybody'd like to come address us? No? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number eight. Public hearing to consider amending the city's street master plan to add a 66-foot wide major collector road from Fiddler's Ranch Road to Canyon Ranch Drive.
Evening, city council. So yes, what we have is we've got a master planned subdivision in here, and we need a possible future road a later date. Hopefully sooner than later.
That's pretty big, possible future.
Yeah. So we've, we've got a master planned road. This doesn't define exactly where it's going. We're just saying there will be a road in this area. And Sitla is, is okay with that through that area and tying back into a city, city street.
This is, this is that piece of property that is hoping to be an extension to the PUD that's there.
Correct.
Can you pull up a topo on that so that it shows the that hill in relation to that road?
Yeah, this is near that property we just got.
And currently, there are a couple dirt roads that go out through that area.
Yeah, so that road would tie in someplace right in this area. Right here and then come up and.
I think it comes just shy of that hill and comes back around.
It's probably going to be coming in onto the city property that we've got from Sitla for the soccer fields, and it'd be you know, when we design the soccer fields, we'll make sure that that road doesn't impair the soccer fields, but it will provide access to those soccer fields. And then it comes back down and ties onto can't remember what the street's.
There was an auto mall drive.
Auto Mall Drive.
Yeah.
That tie-in where Mr. Smith can benefit to for the egress on his.
Yeah, that's the main intent of this whole project.
Main deal, right?
Yeah. This is an alternative.
And who pays for this road?
The developers of the land as it goes through it. Yeah, we master plan the road and then the developers will develop around the road. It may not be in the exact location that's shown on the master plan. They can reconfigure that road to kind of fit their development. The developers will end up paying for it. There may be some of the road that might qualify for impact fees that we would pay for for some of the center portion of the road.
But it doesn't commit any of us to pay for a road at this point?
No.
So this, this allows you for your input on the width of roads and.
Aren't we already obligated through this land exchange to pay for the road from down by Loves up to the, our, the property we inherited from Sitla? Is that part of this road?
This could be, yeah, this could be that road. We're, through that contract, we're obligated to have one installed within 20 years.
Yeah, and we won't know exactly till we get feasibility study through that to even consider. Yeah, where it's going to go.
Are you kind of looking at the area like where that dirt road goes up?
Yeah.
Through there now?
We had a portion of that road that was following that, that dirt road area, so it's.
Like along the fence line and then
Yeah.
Across.
There's a couple ravines that would obviously need to dealt with, but nothing that's not doable.
Okay.
This road will probably also impact piece of university property that sits right in this area.
Yeah.
Probably run through that property and provide access into that property as well.
And they're okay with that, is that?
They're okay with that, as I understand, or at least have been talked to about it, correct?
Well, until we put that road in, though, that doesn't give Mr. Smith access to open up the rest of those, right?
But this opens the door for that possibility.
Okay.
This has got to be an improved access.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
We're just basically approving this road to be somewhere in that vicinity to be on the master plan.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
All right, seeing this as a public hearing, we'll open the public hearing. If anybody'd like to come and comment on it, they're welcome to. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And on, we breezed through all these public hearings, but did we? I forgot what we're putting on action. Most of these items are action items, aren't they? I forgot to mention that, but it looked like they all were pretty much. Last one could be, yeah, but okay. Sorry, I failed to mention that. Okay, we'll move into our staff portion of the agenda. First item, item number nine, is to consider an airport lease for the SUU simulator building. Jeremy?
Jeremy Valgartsen representing the airport. This is the simplest lease I will ever bring to you, I'm sure. This is, it's an existing building. Colonel Matheson was using it. As you drive back by Sphere One, there's a cinder block building there that has no airport access. It's a completely brick wall on the back. It's kind of hard to find an airport use for that building, so SUU's kind of helped us out, and they've been using it to hold their simulator. So they got a helicopter simulator and a airplane simulator. If you get time, you should go check it out. They'll usually let you fly it. It's, they're pretty nice simulators. Colonel Matheson is, is kind of selling off most of his assets. He only has two left, this being one of them. Airport Board has approved that Colonel Matheson terminates his lease, and they request that we enter lease with Southern Utah University to lease that building. It's our standard 20-year lease. It's got five, five-year extensions. The current rate is 20 cents a square foot a year, so it'd be $806.40 a year. It is a raw land lease, so.
Really raw.
Very raw.
You're needing an old lease for a new lease. It's a push.
Yeah, yeah, so we it's probably been about six months ago, we amended the rules and regulations that if they even are to transfer a lease, they would have to adopt the current rate. So it's in their best interest to terminate and get new, new terms.
What, what about the? What, what about the 20-year? I mean, I don't know how old the building is, it's there, but is this going to be a problem 20 years from now or 15 years from now? We need to do something and we're in the middle of this lease and we can't do anything around this building?
Well, it's just, just a raw land lease. We don't own the building. They own the building. The, the building's in good condition.
All right.
So they own the building and the upkeep.
That's correct, yep.
Okay. Okay, we'll move this on then. Thank you, Jeremy. This can go on consent, can it? Okay, item number 10 is to consider awarding a bid to Superior Equipment for the purchase of a fire truck. Chief Phillips.
Good evening, Mayor Council, Pro-Tam and staff. Mike Phillips with the Fire Department. So I'm just here to seek the approval of purchasing a new type one, type three, type one wildland urban interface engine, taking the money that we have in the capital reserve account, the 300 and some thousand dollars that we have there, and taking revenue that we've earned this year. We just billed, we're in billing now of $390,000, which puts our net revenue right around $270,000 this year. So the purpose of this capital reserve account is to buy these apparatus and it falls within our business plan that we had approved by the council. So Superior Equipment is on the state's preferred vendor list. And then the program we're going through is this, and make sure I get it right. It's the National Purchasing Partners through the Fire Rescue Group Purchasing Organization. So what it is, it's publicly solicited contracts and we're just piggybacking on another contract from another government organization. We contacted, Paul asked us to contact State Procurement and see if we could do this and they basically said they're a preferred vendor. If we get a letter from them stating that it's the same price or less, then it's the same as a state bid. We provided that letter to you in your packet. Just a little interesting note, last year you guys approved $70,000 to upgrade our brush truck, buy new Chad Cassie lights and sirens packages. That truck has earned just, well, 200 and, what is it, $248,000 this year. So that's been a good investment. Anyway, we're asking to approve the contract with Superior Equipment for 447,862.24.
Can you just review, just so we all know, what, what is the lead time on this truck? And, and where will it take us? I mean, what are the advantages? Just give us some background over it.
So the truck takes 11 to 13 months to build. That's what the contract says.
Wow.
And so if we order it, if you approve it next week, we won't see it till next September, October. So it's quite a long lead time. The intent is to prepay the, the trucks. We'll pay, prepay it upfront. Saves us about $15,000, which brings that price down to that 447.
So currently in the Fire Department's fleet, we have a number of large structure engines, which are more expensive vehicles than the type three, type one engine. Part of Mike's longer-term plan is to acquire additional type three, type one engines. And as those larger structure engines get older and phase out, we would retire some of those and we can use these type three, type one engines on structure as well as wildland. So it's a little more versatility. It's a little, uh, if you get to the big picture, I know to say fire trucks are less expensive is kind of a hard thing to say because they're all expensive.
All expensive.
If you get to the big picture and compare the cost of the type three, type ones with the large structure engines, the intent of switching some of those large structure engines to the type three, type one is overall savings over a longer period of time.
So instead of having a fleet that's all specialized structure engines and wildland engines, we'd start to take, we'd still keep those structure engines for ISO. We'd still keep some of the brush trucks, but this puts us in the middle and the big picture is we can overall lessen the number of vehicles we have in our fleet.
Or just remember, you're friends with the airport that always need the vehicles.
We will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Tom, did you want to comment?
Thank you, Tom Jett. I just like, I, I've said this before and I'll, I'll say it again. Other cities, we must be the envy, our cities like Cedar City must be the envy of, and, and, and the, and the leadership that we have in this community, in the city. For other cities that I read about on a regular basis, it's from small to large, that have a hard time meeting their, their obligations and maintaining their fleets and so forth. When I hear stuff like this, it absolutely amazes me why other cities in this country cannot have the same leadership and the same type of thought, forward-thinking to, to do what, what we do. It's, it's not to be little anybody, it's not brain surgery, it's just good leadership. And that is, that's just fantastic for, for everybody involved in our city. It's just wonderful to hear that. Thank you.
The business plan is doing what it intended to do, isn't it? Yeah, thank you. Okay, let's move on to, we'll put that, we'll put that on consent also. Okay, let's move on to item number 11. The public hearing to cons, hearing to consider amending the 2018-19 fiscal year budget. Jason?
All right, so you'll recall from our formal budget process, a few months ago, we had talked about that this item would come up. We'd agreed when the Fire Department had gone out and earned the remaining amount they needed for this truck, that we would move forward their capital reserve and then include revenue from the current year. So that'll be the only item on this public budget revision, so that's.
Okay. Yeah.
Uh, we could.
We'll add a second item. Council just approved the funding needed from the capital reserve for the animal shelter. So we'll also take public comments on that and we'll include that as a second item for this revision.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions before we go to the public hearing? Okay, we'll open the public hearing on this, uh, budget revision. If anybody'd like to come address those two items that were mentioned. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move on to item number 12. To consider approving a resolution granting local consent to Cedar City businesses that have previously been approved to sell beer for off-premise consumption.
So this year, the state of Utah updated some of their alcohol laws and they're now requiring businesses that sell off-premise beer for off-premise consumption to get a local consent approval from their local municipality. So in order to help out these businesses, we've identified those that have previously been licensed with the city. We've identified them in this resolution. This way, it's just going to help them all come into conformance with state law, which goes into effect in February of next year. This saves them one by one coming in and requesting that from the council.
It also, I'm assuming, saves our police department time from having to do the studies and everything else if they previously had the licenses, is that correct?
Correct.
And obviously if there's been any infringement or any problem with these businesses, that would be addressed. So we would know from year to year.
Correct.
And we still have those mechanisms in place from our.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions, anybody? Okay, we'll put that on the consent agenda as well. Okay, item number 13.
Do you have a question?
Put that on action. Oh, that's right, sorry. I was on a roll there after all those others. All right, consider approving, consider approving a road dedication on 850 North at 2550 West for IFA Access Road.
Okay, um, this is 850 West right here. IFA's, uh, the new IFA facilities, uh, down here next to the railroad. This road has, has been connected through to the new IFA facility and, uh, but it was never dedicated, so this is the process that we have to go through to dedicate that road so that the city can maintain, uh, maintain it and provide access to IFA.
So it, it cleans up the reality of that connection.
Yeah, this was done, I think, a year ago.
Yeah, over a year ago, nearly two years ago it's built.
Okay. Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I move to adjourn this meeting.
Second, Ed?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that one. I don't know, I don't know what you did without me two weeks ago.
One little reminder on, on weeds. And I just thought of this, I, I should have probably brought it up earlier, but in our budget, this last go-around, when we passed it in June, there was some money put into Public Works to buy some equipment to help us spray some of these weeds so that the stuff down there on Coal Creek Road by Woodbury Split is something that we would probably use this material for. I don't think we've done it yet because we've been chip sealing.
But we have the machinery.
I don't know if we've acquired it yet because.
Very good. No, because it's a big, it's a big area.
And it's.
But once we get them down, we should sterilize that.
Those areas off the sidewalks are something that we have problems with all over town.
Yeah. Yeah, I heard all about that. Yeah, I heard about that. Wow, yeah, my brother has a home out there and they lost trees.
There are places all around town. So Jeff normally sends a crew out during the summer to, to hit those. Yes, sir.
You catnip me in the bug.
I say nothing like it.
You press into the wall.
Nothing like a dogfight compared to a chicken fight. That's what I was going to tell him, but.
Don't worry, I'm going to be pressing the flesh with every one of you for a little donation. You're not getting out of this alive. Exactly.
Social fund needs to go up in this right away?
Right away. We had a meeting last week.
I'm glad we could do. I prefer that. I went a lot faster than I thought it was going to.
So you can go home by your own piece of that. Not time to cook it.
Get me the diminish, you go down the ditch, you don't have to get brain surgery.
How are you doing?
And how are you?
You still thinking that commute?
Yeah.
Good for you.
Oh, I know, yeah. I have to stop three or four times every time.